It is now 7 o'clock PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record?
Kelly Case.
Carol Harvey.
Hillary LaBarre.
Paul Tsunier.
Aaron Smith.
Sally Riley.
Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into the executive session, occurred during the executive session, or that improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask you to state your concerns now. Hearing none, the next agenda item is the pledge of allegiance. Everybody will please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all. We have a couple of great presentations tonight, and I'm going to start by introducing our tremendous county commissioner, Norm Steen. Welcome, Norm. Could you just give us your name and your address before you start? It'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Norm Steen. I live at 140 Blue Sky here in Woodland Park. Tonight's my pleasure to introduce to you the new executive director of the Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments. So even though I serve as your county commissioner, tonight I'm wearing a second hat, and yet I serve as the chairman of the Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments. We're a 16-member government organization, three counties of all of El Paso, all of Teller, and all of Park County. So, three counties, 16 municipalities, I think from Reima to up to Monument, Woodland Park, and up to Alma. So, tonight we have a presentation. It's my pleasure to introduce Andy Gunning. Andy's been with us for a little over two months. He comes to us from Rockville, Maryland, brings a huge body of information and expertise, and at this point, Andy Gunning. Also, before you step up, Jessica McMullin, our communications policy director for the Pikes Peak Council of Governments. Andy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And I'll be brief. I know you have a lot of items on your agenda. As Norm mentioned, Andy Gunning, my address, just moved to the area two months ago, 2815 Flint Ridge Drive in Colorado Springs, but we're in the market, looking for a house. So we may be up here this weekend looking around. It's absolutely beautiful up here. So as Norm said, I came here via Rockville, Maryland, back in the Washington DC area. I was the planning director back in Rockville, deputy director for about seven years, but before that it was in Arizona, Tucson, Arizona, for about 16 years. About 12 of those years was with the regional planning agency, very similar to PPACG. So I'm thrilled to be back out west doing the regional work that we do. You know, we're only successful if we do regional collaboration and coordinate with our partners, and that's our local jurisdictions, our county agencies, CDOT, the feds that we have to work with, and all of our other partners throughout our region. So we're, you know, our work is based on collaboration. I'm all about making sure we can build a strong regional community with a strong quality of life and economic vitality, so that's central to everything we do at PPACG. So just was going to give you just a real quick overview of some of the things that we do in our agency, if you're not familiar. We've got a black folder with a whole bunch of information in it, and I'm not going to go through it in detail, but it's got some really fantastic resources for all the different programs that we serve. You may or may not know, but we serve in a number of different capacities. We're the official council of governments for our three-county area, El Paso, Teller, and Park County. I think we're one of 14 COGS, council of government throughout Colorado. We also serve as the state-designated metropolitan planning organization for the urbanized area. So that's a smaller area, doesn't cover the entire three-county area, but you know, Woodland Park's in that urbanized area for transportation planning, and I'll say a few words about that in just a minute. We're also the area agency on aging under the Older Americans Act, so that gives us certain responsibilities to make sure that we're taking care of our senior population. I'll say a few words about that as well. And we're also the state-designated lead water quality and air quality agency for our three-county regional agency. So we wear a lot of different hats, a lot of different responsibilities, but again, the one thing that kind of cuts across all of that is high quality of life is what we strive for in economic vitality. And Norm mentioned our organizational structure, 16 cities and towns and counties that are on our board. We also have ex officio membership from CDOT, Colorado Department of Transportation, and also from our five military installations. So it's really a forum where the elected officials can come together and talk about regional issues that cut across our jurisdictional boundaries. It's really a great format to talk about some of these issues that maybe aren't being discussed on an individual jurisdictional basis. Just real briefly, want to mention the four program areas, main program areas that we serve. I mentioned our area agency on aging. Really, the bread and butter that we put out each year is an update of directory of services throughout the three-county region, and you've got a copy of this in your booklets, and we'll leave a bunch of these here for you as well. But it's a great resource, you know, we serve the 60 and over population. I like to say that a senior tsunami is on its way. It's a huge portion of our demographic today, and it's growing at a great rate when we look at our growth forecast. So really phenomenal demands we have with our senior population. So in addition to pointing folks in the right direction as far as getting resources, we have case managers who provide consultation and assistance for seniors in need, also for families that are providing caregiver services, we provide consultation for them as well. We have experts that provide advice and consultation on Medicare. If anybody's had to try to navigate the Medicare system, it's incredibly complicated, and you can pay a lot of money on the private marketplace trying to get advice on which Medicare plan to sign up for, and we do that for free, so we're there as a resource there. So anybody in need in Woodland Park, whether you're 60 and over, or you're a caretaker, a family caretaker of somebody in need, feel free to give us a call. We've got a lot of great contact information, resources that we can connect you with in our agency. About 60% of the funding that we get in our AAA, our agency area, we actually pass that through to local nonprofits that provide service as well, and that's agencies like the Teller Senior Coalition, Silver Key, Ambly Cab. If folks need mobility, transportation needs to get to a doctor's appointment, we provide support there. Meals on Wheels, legal services, you name it, a whole host of different services. So just wanted to mention that. It's really just a tremendous resource there in our aging community, if you haven't checked that out. Just real briefly, another major area that we emphasize is our planning around military installations. We're doing what's called a joint land use study right now, where we're looking at development patterns around our five major military installations and coming up with a series of recommendations to make sure we can protect them and the missions that they need to get ready for, and we're coming out with a report that's going to go to the board later this year. And it addresses really not just land use issues, but environmental issues, transportation, and accessibility issues to get on our bases, and a whole host of other factors. So it's really, it's really an important part to our community. I think it's something like 40% of our regional economy comes directly from our military installation, so we need to make sure we can do what we can to protect their missions and their readiness. Third area I wanted to mention is environmental planning, and really that's broken down into two areas. We're good as far as air quality, beautiful, clear skies and blue skies here, so no problems there. The main emphasis in environmental planning for us is water quality planning, and we're about to update our area-wide water quality management plan. I should know this answer, but I don't know off the top of my head. Do you guys provide water, wastewater service to the city? Okay. We're going to update that plan starting later this year, probably this summer, and we want to make sure that you're at the table as we do that. The last update, I think, was in 2010, so we need to get this updated and in alignment with our growth forecasts and ideally with other infrastructure plans we're working on, like our transportation plan as well, and try to get these all kind of in sync as we look at our big infrastructure needs. So that effort's going to get started later this year with all the wastewater providers, and hopefully that'll be adopted by our board sometime in the middle of 2019, so that's going to get started fairly soon. And finally, the last thing I want to mention is transportation planning. That takes up a lot of the time that our board spends with their monthly board meetings and a lot of the work we do at PPACG, but we're required as a metropolitan planning organization to plan out for a given horizon, and right now we're updating our plan to the year 2045. We need a long-range plan that can look at what all our needs are as far as roadway improvements, transit improvements, you name it, everything we need as far as mobility. Then based on that, we adopt what's called a four-year transportation improvement program that identifies where the money's going to go in the short term. Local money, regional money that we generate, you know, we manage the Pikes Peak Regional Transportation Authority as well, that also includes state money and federal money we get. So before we can program where any of those funds are going to go for transportation projects, they've got to be part of that long-range plan. So that's a major effort that we're involved with right now. I think we're doing a call for projects that your staff are probably involved with as well. We want to know by, I think it's the end of June, which major projects ought to be part of that long-range plan and, you know, help us as far as our regional mobility. So that's just a little bit on the transportation side. I'm leaving out a lot of other stuff that we do. You know, we're here to serve our local jurisdictions as well. We've been doing these outreach meetings now for the past couple of weeks, was up in Calhoun on Monday night, and we're going to Monument and Park County next week, and hearing a lot of good feedback and ways that we can help our local jurisdictions. So if you think of anything that you need help with, whether it's information development, planning assistance, you know, you name it, feel free to give us a shout. You've got my contact info in the folders, but if you have any questions or suggestions or observations tonight, be happy to take those as well.
Counsel. Thanks, Andy. One thing that we certainly are going to be in communication with you on is the long-range plan for transportation and Highway 24, and that's a big issue with us, and so you'll be hearing from us in that regard for sure.
Absolutely. Very good. Sounds good.
Kip Wiley is our utilities director. You guys should know each other because you'll be working together. And counsel, any other questions for Mr. Gunning?
I'd like to also add Highway 67, as traffic is now getting heavier and heavier with more development and things of that nature. We do need to look at additional turning lanes and some drainage issues that are along that highway, but we'll have plenty of time to talk about that.
Thank you. Andy, thanks for being here. Jessica, thanks for being here. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on, and Carol Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce Mr. Donaldson, who's here to speak about something that's, I think, of great importance to the community and individual families as well. Mr. Donaldson and I worked together at NORAD and US Northcom up until 2016. I can't believe it's already been that long since you retired, Howard. Howard was a frequent participant in our office potlucks, that's how we met. Although he was the deputy judge advocate for the command, our relationship didn't have anything to do with legal affairs, thank goodness. Howard's bio is going to be in the back, but I just wanted to hit some of the highlights before he starts his presentation. He serves as a chief legal counsel six times. That's quite remarkable in the military, and he spent his last five years in the Air Force duty in special operations. And we crossed paths in 1995 as well, when I was a young major and you were at US Base Cutman NORAD. I'm sure you don't remember that, but we did. He and his wife Sally counted their tour in Colorado Springs as probably their favorite, and they resolved if they ever got a chance to come back, they would, and they did that in 2003, when US Northern Command stood up, and Howard is a plank holder there. He was our senior civilian counsel there and the deputy director of the SJA office. He's a graduate of the University of Nevada and Golden Gate University School of Law, and he is licensed to practice in the United States Military Court of Criminal Appeals, as well as the Supreme Court of California, which I thought was interesting, and the United States Supreme Court. I can't see you arguing a case in California, but possibly that could have happened. They have two children, his wife and he have two children. One of those is now currently in the Air Force, Lieutenant Colonel, and his son Brian is employed as a computer systems analyst in Charlotte, North Carolina. Howard's presentation I've seen several times, and this occurred shortly after the Waldo Canyon fire. Because of his experiences in that fire, and he's going to relate that to you, he learned a lot about home insurance, and what happens when you don't have the right coverage, and what happens when you are affiliated with an insurance company that does take care of its customers. He's abbreviated his presentation for us for the sake of time, but he will be available in the lobby if there are any questions afterwards. And I wanted to ask Tyler if you had any other introductory remarks that you wanted to make before Howard started.
It was just a pleasure talking with you. I was happy to hear your presentation this evening. The path we're taking, we need to follow, and he's excited, so it's just interesting that you're excited with the results.
So Howard, if you will please give us your name and address, and it's all yours.
Well, my name, excuse me, my name is Howard Donaldson, and I live at 2615 Rossmere Street in Colorado Springs, and I've lived there since 2003, when I retired from the Air Force and took the job at NORAD and Northcom. But there was a brief 13-month period when I didn't live there, because we lost our home and we were in the process of rebuilding it. But as I'll talk about during the presentation this evening, having the right amount of insurance enabled us to do that. So there's the information, contact information. As Carol mentioned, if there are any questions from my presentation from members of the audience, I'll be happy to wait outside in the lobby to answer any of those questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for this opportunity. I'd like to start out with what I call a handwriting on the wall, and if you've been, if you read the Colorado Springs Gazette, there have been numerous articles recently about the fire season that is approaching. February 28th, you can see that they talk about a fire season that's going to be dire in Colorado. The Pikes Peak Region fire season recalls 2012 and 2013. Then we have, already had the so-called Highway 117 fire, in which we lost 23 homes already this year. I felt strongly enough about this concept of making sure you have the right amount of insurance, and I wrote a letter to the editor, which was published on April 26th, in which I urged all people in the Pikes Peak Region to do what I'm going to talk to you about tonight, namely, review your insurance, review your homeowner's insurance, and make sure you know what you have, make sure that it's adequate. Now, of course, the dire 2012 to 2013 fire season was when we lost 347 homes in the Waldo Canyon fire, we lost another 488 in the Black Forest Fire less than a year later. Here's what it looks like when you suddenly urge, when you suddenly realize what it means to live in the urban-wildland interface. This particular photograph was taken on June 26th, 2012, out of the upstairs bedroom in our home, looking basically south. This one was taken a few minutes later, looking basically to the west, when the wildfire, which had been moving slowly away from us at about 10 miles an hour towards uninhabited areas, suddenly shifted and came directly at us at 65 miles an hour. I could explain the weather phenomenon that caused that, but the point, the takeaway is wildfires are called wildfires for a reason, and they're very unpredictable. This one was taken less than 30 seconds later, looking out the same window, so you can see how quickly the fire moved. I'd also like to bring your attention to our next-door neighbor's home, and I'll have more to say about that later, but suffice it to say, split cedar shingles and wooden siding are not good things to have on your home when you live in the urban-wildland interface. This is a photograph that the Fire Marshal of Colorado Springs, Brett Lacy, gave to me, that shows our immediate neighborhood. These are nine of the 347 homes that were destroyed in the Waldo Canyon fire. Ours is the one at the T-intersection of Taliesin Court and Rossmere Street. This is what I normally cover in about an hour, and as Carol mentioned, I'm going to be abbreviating it a bit tonight, but I would be remiss if I didn't at least mention in passing and give a shout-out to Tyler Lambert, among others, about mitigation. Mitigation is eloquent underscoring of the old adage about an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Bottom line is, you need to consult with experts who will come and look at your home, look at your home site, and tell you what you need to do to minimize the possible effects of a wildfire. And I mean, cutting, trimming growth, trimming the limbs on your trees and so forth, so that you can ensure that a wildfire doesn't take over the trees and start spreading from top to top. A grass fire will burn through, and you won't have any damage to your home if you follow the expert's advice. I've listed the contact information for those folks, and I urge you to learn from our lessons and consult with them and do what they tell you to do. We neither consulted with them before the Waldo Canyon fire, nor did, of course, we take some preventive actions. This is a photograph of our home as it existed about two weeks before the Waldo Canyon fire, and you will note that there are some things that Chief Lambert also mentioned when he saw this photograph. Some beautiful Colorado blue spruce trees right up against our house, ivy that grew over the front door, coupled with the tinderbox that was next door to us, that was between us and the 65 mile an hour winds blowing right at us. Our home didn't have a trans. This is what it looked like two weeks later, on about, I think they let us back in about July 3rd. This is what our home site looked like, looking from the backyard toward the front. As you can see, this is what I mean when I talk about a total loss. And believe me, when you need to have insurance, you need to have insurance. So I want to turn now to talking at some length about what I call homeowner's insurance 101. Now, the bottom line in this is to make sure you have the proper amount of insurance before you need it. As Chief Lambert and I discussed the other day, when the smoke is in the air, it's too late to call your insurance company and say, do I have the right amount of insurance? I want to raise the limits. It's too late to do it then. So what I urge everyone to do is call your policy service representatives, experts now, and I'm going to list some questions you need to ask them. And I'm going to get down in the weeds a little bit to tell you some specific things about homeowner's insurance that you may not know, but you need to know. The first question that you need to ask your policy service experts is this: If I have a total loss, what are you going to pay for? It's a simple question, but it's got a complex answer, and you need to know what they're talking about when they answer that question. All insurance companies talk with homeowner's insurance are going to talk about basically four coverages. Now, there are some ancillary ones that I'll talk about in a few minutes, but coverage A, B, C, and D are the things you should be concerned about. Coverage A is the dwelling. Coverage B is for appurtenant structures. Coverage C is for contents, or personal property inside the home, and coverage D is for temporary living expenses. I want to point out a couple of really crucially important things about these coverages. Coverage A has to do with the cost of replacing your home. Do not make the mistake of thinking that you should only insure your home for the fair market value, what you could sell it for, for example. That will not be sufficient. Trust me, your home is going to cost 35 to 40% more to rebuild than what you could sell it for. I know that, because that's what it cost us. We have the right amount of insurance, and it enabled us to do that. We were in the process of refinancing our home, and I don't want to sound cynical, but because the home burned down, it saved us $1,000 in closing costs, because we didn't have to go through with that. But at the closing, when we first sat down with the adjudicator from our insurance company, we already had the payoff for our loan, and he asked how we got that so quickly. And we explained that we were in the process of refinancing, we just had it appraised, and he said, what did it appraise for? And I kind of smiled at him, and I said, that's irrelevant, it's none of your business. Because it wasn't. The fair market value of the house, what it appraised for, what you could sell it to, is totally irrelevant. Coverage A is how much it's going to cost you to rebuild the home. And it's important that you get coverage A right, because all of the other coverages are a percentage of coverage A. So if you don't remember anything else I tell you this evening, make sure you talk to your insurance company and get coverage A right, because if it's wrong, everything's going to be wrong, and you're going to be underinsured. Appurtenant structures, people think, I don't have a separate garage, I don't have a barn, so I won't need appurtenant structures coverage. Don't make that mistake. It's usually about 10% of coverage A, and what that includes are things like, it would include a separate garage, it would include a barn, but it also includes driveways, sidewalks, retaining walls, and so forth. It's very important, again, that you get that right, because if you live on, you look at the photograph of our home, you'll notice that we had lots of retaining walls, lots of sidewalks, lots of steps, and we were very thankful we had the right coverage A, because the appurtenant structures were a big part of the settlement we ultimately got. Coverage C, the contents, your personal property, what this is industry standard, 75% of coverage A. Now, what the insurance companies will do, and I'll have more to say about this in a few minutes, but typically when they'll come in and they'll say, we'll give you 75% of 75%. In other words, they're saying you're going to have 25% depreciation across the board. So they'll give you 75% of the 75%, and many people take that and walk away. But that's a mistake, in my opinion, to do that, for reasons that I'll cover in just a few minutes. But just remember that 75% of coverage A is the policy limit for your personal property. Temporary living expenses is usually, in most instances, it's 20% of coverage A, and it's for one year, and it will be extendable for two years if you need it. As I mentioned at the start of my presentation, we needed an extra month of that. We had a year, and then we, it took 13 months to rebuild, so we had to dip into that second year. Some insurance companies don't do that. Some insurance companies will only give you six months. So again, ask your policy service people what they're going to cover and for how long. Okay, as I mentioned, the key question on coverage A is ask the insurance company how they determined what your coverage A should be. At this point, I really need to foot stomp that you ask the insurance company to determine the coverage A. You may disagree with them if you don't think it's enough, but they are the ones, they're the experts, they are the ones that should determine what your coverage A is. Why is that? Well, I'm an attorney, I'm retired, I no longer practice, so I have to do a little bit of a disclaimer here, but I know for some, from some litigation that's going on in California right now, for the October 17th wildfire in Sonoma County, if the insurance company gets coverage A wrong, and again, everything else is wrong, they're going wrong, and again, everything else is wrong, they're going to be required, I think, to settle above policy limits because they allowed you to be underinsured. So, it's very important that you ask the insurance company how they determined what your coverage A should be. At the end of this presentation, I'll give you a link to some, well, I'll give you a way to get onto a website for a nonprofit called Care Incorporated, which will give you some links to survivor's guide to insurance, how to avoid being underinsured, and a lot of things that I'm talking about this evening. And again, it bears repeating, get coverage A right and everything else will fall into place. But there are some other questions that you want to ask your insurance company. You want to ask about coverage C in particular. Remember, 75% of coverage A is going to be for your personal property, for your contents. Ask what actual cash value is. Actual cash value is depreciated value. That's where they take off that proverbial 25% that I mentioned a few minutes ago. How is depreciation calculated? Do they do a line-by-line adjudication and take 10% depreciation per year, like the Air Force does when you have a permanent change of station move, for example? Or do they just use an arbitrary flat rate 25%? And then you need to ask, what is replacement cost value? Replacement cost value is irrespective of the age of the item, how much is it going to cost you to replace it? Quick example from my own personal experience. My wife Sally and I had a freezer that we bought when I was, first came in the Air Force in, well, 1975. We had taken that freezer all over the world with us. We took it to Italy and ran it off of Transformers, for example. We had it out in the garage in Hawaii with tropical temperatures. I mean, the freezer took a beating, but it was still going strong when our home burned down. They paid us for a new freezer when we bought it. A brand-new freezer, even though it needed to be replaced. That's the importance of replacement cost value. It replaces the item. Yes?
Howard, what about antiques?
Okay, very good question. Carol knows the answer to this. My wife was very fond, well, she still is, but when we were in Europe, we bought a lot of antiques. She was very fond of English oak barley twist antiques and we had a lot of them. And when we came to the United States, we had them all appraised. I scanned those appraisals in and put them on my computer. And when the home burned down, for reasons I'll state in a few minutes, I had photographed everything in the house. And we had photographs of those antiques, which our insurance company was able to price and pay us what it would have cost to replace these irreplaceable things if we could find them. So, antiques is one example. Gun collections, coin collections. You may want to get a special rider in your insurance for things like that. Jewelry, guns, et cetera. Excellent question, thank you. But, most insurance companies, most of your insurance policies will have replacement cost value clauses in them. Will the insurance company necessarily tell you about that? No. Because you, they come in, they give you 75% of 75%. Most people, and all the other things that you have to deal with in a total loss, never go back to their insurance company and say, "How do I get this replacement cost insurance?" Know ahead of time whether you have it or not and how you get it. The only way you're going to do that is ask the insurance company before it's too late. Okay, what other coverages do I have if you will want to ask your insurance company? And I want to briefly talk about some of these. Code changes. Our original home was built in 1992. We rebuilt in 2013. There were a lot of code changes between 1992 and 2013 that caused the cost of rebuilding our home to be significantly higher than it was when the home was originally built. The Pike's Peak Regional Builders, as a matter of fact, were marvelous with respect to helping us in this regard because they told us what building codes were in effect in 1992, what the changes were, and then our builder was able to say, "If I'd have built this home in 1992 standards, it would have cost this. 2013 standards, it costs this much more. Two-by-sixes instead of two-by-fours, a heavier grade of electrical wiring, UV-rated windows, energy-efficient appliances, water-efficient toilets and faucets and so forth." Code changes, significant additional expense, you're going to need to have that if you're going to be adequately covered to rebuild your home. Extended temporary living is something I already touched upon. Inflation protection is crucially important. What inflation protection does is if your code changes coverage isn't, is exhausted, and again, I didn't mention, that's typically 5% of coverage A. Inflation protection is different. It's up to 25% of coverage A. And that's going to cover things like increased building costs and supply and demand type of things that cause the cost of rebuilding your home to skyrocket. I have an older brother who lives in Sonoma County. He was evacuated from that fire that I mentioned earlier. Didn't have any damage, but he retired from being in the home construction industry. And he told me that the 5,000 homes that were lost in that fire are probably never going, many of them are never going to be rebuilt because the construction companies won't even write contracts because they don't know how much it's going to cost. They don't know where they're going to get the skilled labor to rebuild them. Did that happen in Colorado Springs with two wildfires and almost 1,000 homes lost in less than a year? Not to a real significant extent, but it did have enough of an effect that it was a concern. You need to have that 25% inflation protection. Don't forget about debris removal and demolition, that's another 5% of coverage A. Landscaping is another 5%. Many people don't know this, but when you have a total loss of a home, you own the land outright because the insurance company doesn't insure the land. They do, however, insure what's on the land. Trees, plants, and shrubs is another 5% of coverage A. And then ask if there's anything else you've overlooked, such as the thing that Ms. Harvey raised. Special clauses that you may have had in your contract for things like coin collection, jewelry, gun collections, and so forth. Bottom line, you must absolutely avoid being underinsured. I think I have about five minutes left and I want to talk about documenting what you own. As I mentioned at the start of this program, I was upstairs taking photographs when we received a reverse 9/11 call telling us we had to leave immediately. And many people ask what I was doing taking photographs out the window instead of evacuating. Well, the truth is, that afternoon, I had been photographing everything in our home. I felt real uneasy about this fire, even though it was moving away from us. So, starting Saturday afternoon, I started photographing everything in our home. And I was finishing it up when we received the reverse 9/11 call. And then, of course, we took the camera with us. Some of my neighbors didn't do that. And we left. But I'm awfully glad that I had those photographs in addition to the ones that the appraiser took of the home two weeks before, for reasons that I mentioned when I responded to Ms. Harvey's question about antiques and other things. One photograph can be worth 1,000 words and, point in fact, one photograph can be worth thousands of dollars. These are two of my favorite automobiles, I should say were. The car on the right is Lulabelle, our 1938 Chevrolet Street Rod, was rebuilt right here in Pike's Peak region in Colorado Springs. And the car on the left is a Camaro convertible, 1992, 25th anniversary edition RS, that was a very special car that my wife bought me to celebrate a promotion that was really important to us. Lulabelle survived the fire. The Camaro on the left did not. And the one disagreement I had with my insurance company was the value of the Camaro. They only wanted to give me blue book value, even though I had been online looking for a like Camaro convertible and it was significantly higher than blue book value, more than two times higher. But they only wanted to give me blue book value until I sent them this photograph. Now, I emphasize that this wasn't handled under coverage C of the policy. This was comprehensive on the automobile insurance. But when they saw this photograph and saw what I was talking about and the care that I took of my automobiles, they gave me another $1,700. So, photograph everything you own and it may pay dividends. Okay, I mentioned CareHelp.org, the last thing that I wanted to mention. The, I'd like to mention the local community, though. Local community was very, very responsive to fire victims. There was a nonprofit called Colorado Springs Together that helped us, gave us a little card to document our losses and qualify for what many merchants, one of which is right here in Woodland Park. My wife and I spent a lot of time in Tweeds shopping, for example. They, the local community, the merchants, were very responsive to victims and helped out those, especially that were underinsured. This is the website that you will get if you log on to CareHelp.org. Those four dots in the upper right-hand corner are some downloadable documents that will emphasize many of the things that I've talked to you about this evening. But I want to return to this photograph of our home, early June 2012. Having the right amount of insurance enabled us to rebuild. And there is the rebuilt home. And you'll notice how far those Colorado blue spruce trees are from the new. That concludes my remarks. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this evening and I'll entertain any questions that members of council may have. Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to see a picture of the neighbor's house.
I beg your pardon?
Did your neighbors rebuild that were your fire starters?
Yes, they did. The neighbor to the west of us, the one with the tinderbox, did not. He sold, but somebody bought that lot and they have since rebuilt. Everybody has rebuilt in our immediate neighborhood. There are four other lots that have not been rebuilt.
Howard, I'm sure there are other questions. We have your contact information and you said you'd be in the lobby maybe afterwards to take questions if people have them now?
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it. Great information for all of us and thanks for your time and thanks for being here today. And Carol, thanks for setting us up.
Yeah, very good.
Really good.
You're very welcome. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move on to additions, deletions, or corrections. Sally, do you have something for us?
Yes, please, Mayor Levy. We would like to add an item under the manager's report, which would be item 11D2, and the topic will be flower baskets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent calendar and Sally?
Thank you. The consent calendar contains two items. First are the minutes from the May 3 meeting, council meeting, and those are with amendments. We amended those and distributed them to you on May 14. And then the second item is the approval of the April 2018 statement of expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign the warrants.
Counsel? Questions? Not, just a motion to approve the consent calendar, please. Some move?
Second.
And a second, Paul? Thank you. Sally?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sanye?
Yes.
And Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business and welcome Erin Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. There is no need for an executive session, but I would like you to consider amending the established selection timeline milestone that you approved at your special meeting on April 24th. On April 24th, you approved a milestone that said, the week of May 21st, the council would be conducting interviews by Skype. And I would request that you consider a motion to amend that so that it is May 30th and 31st in place of May 21st, or the week of May 21st, and that the interviews would be in person or by Skype to up to 10 people.
What do we need to do? Because we have decided on that already. Do we need a motion?
Yes, that would be the motion. I just framed it.
Okay, and just to move on a little further, we decided, I believe, counsel, tell me if I'm wrong, June 7th is the date we're going to start interviewing if possible in person for those that pass the Skype interviews. Is that what we decided, June 7th? Do we need to include that?
That you don't need to. That's helpful information for the audience, but you had already included an established milestone of the week of June 4th, that you would have those finalists interviews.
We're still in that ballpark?
Yes.
Okay, so just so everybody understands, we are down to approximately between 7 and 10 applicants that we've all decided that we're going to bring in and Skype will do that on May 30th and May 31st. The outcome from there will be to determine how many we will interview in person, starting around June 7th, based on when people can be here. And so, I need a motion to do what our city attorney said. Carol, you have a question?
I did. Neil, I think that we had all agreed that this initial set of interviews would, on the 30th and possibly the 31st, would only be by Skype.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the motion that you've given us to act on said Skype and personal interview. Would that, are you referring to the second set of interviews?
No, I was referring, I was reading off the agenda that the city manager had prepared. So, I will make that correction to the motion, which again, is to amend the established timeline milestone and changing the week of May 21st for timeline milestone, and changing the week of May 21 for interviews by Skype to May 30, May 30 and May 31.
Up to 10 candidates?
Yeah, that wasn't mentioned prior in the prior milestones, but I can add up to 10 candidates.
I would make a motion according to the terms the city attorney just wrote to us.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
And Case?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
And one more thing for everybody here. We're in a great process. Our HR people are doing yeoman's work, and I think council will all agree that we're working hard together to make this happen, and trying to get a great city manager in place as soon as we possibly can. And thrilled with the outcome so far. I believe everybody else is, too. So, we're on a good path in that regard. Okay, we move on to Sally Riley, and ordinance, excuse me, ordinances on initial posting.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. And the first ordinance this evening on initial posting is Ordinance 1328. This is to designate a local historic landmark for the Eldorado Casino, which is currently being used by Preschool in the Pines. It's located at 312 Northwest Street. And it is a request by the Osborne Property Management, LLC. That's owned by Lisa and Brian Osborne, and would like for you to set the public hearing for June 7.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel, we've gone through this procedure a couple times, the last couple meetings, so everyone's pretty familiar. And since we're on initial posting today, unless we have any questions, we'll just call for motion. Carol?
I have no questions, so I just want to make a clarification, because I think there was some misunderstanding at the last council meeting about what the designation entails. It is not the same type of designation that you receive at the national level, historic preservation designation. This is a local designation. It enables the applicant to receive a tax credit if they apply for it, as well as the nifty plaque that we provide to them. But if at any time during the ownership of that piece of property, the owner decides that they no longer want to have the plaque because they want to do something drastically different to the property, they simply turn the plaque back in, and the ordinance would be, we would then be asked to rescind the ordinance. The advantage of having the plaque and then coming back to the Historical Preservation Committee for any approval of something that would occur while the plaque was in place allows them access to our architect on the Historic Preservation Committee, a very talented historian who can tell them about the history of the property. And our applicants have learned a lot about their property in this process. But if they have to come back and say, I have got to raise this property because I, you know, this building is no longer viable for me, that can occur as well. It is not as onerous, or as prescriptive, or restrictive as national historic preservation designation. It's just an indication of a property owner's pride in the property that they own in a community like Woodland Park. And having said that, I'll make a motion to approve this on first reading.
Initial posting?
Yes.
You have a second?
And then, yes, and then vote on it June 7.
Thank you. And a second? And we have a second. Thank you. Okay, Sally?
Labar?
I'm sorry.
Just one question, staff. Sally, will the applicants be here for the public hearing?
They will, yes. Thank you. Now, I'll call the roll. Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yeah.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. The floor is all yours.
Thank you. The second item on initial posting is Ordinance 1329. This is to rezone Quaking Aspens Village. This is a 13-acre tract of land, such that it, the existing zoning of multifamily suburban residential and community commercial are reconfigured on this 13-acre site. And it is located at 19569 East Highway 24. It is a request by M3XP2 LLC, and Gary Edmonds, the owner of Quaking Aspens, and set the public hearing for June 7.
Thank you, Sally. Questions, counsel? I'm sorry. Erin?
After your motion, I do want to give counsel a reminder about the prohibition on ex parte conversations, but I will wait until you've had your motion.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, questions? Not just call for motion on initial posting, to hear the issue on June 7.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Sally?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
And Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Erin?
And Mayor and counsel, I would like to offer you a reminder that with respect to quasi-judicial ordinances, especially those having to do with rezonings, that it is inappropriate and improper, in fact, to engage in any discussions with any person, be it a fellow council member, be it the applicant, or the representatives of the applicant, or be it any neighbor or any member of the public about the application that you will be hearing. When you are approached by someone, please invite them to come to the council meeting so that they can make their statement at the appropriate place, which is at the council meeting during the public hearing. Also, counsel, you may be getting emails about a matter that's before you, such as a rezoning. And again, the city has, the city clerk has a standard form of email response to send to anyone who wants to send you an email about a matter such as a rezoning. You need to remind the sender that you cannot read their email or read their attachment, and that you will be forwarding their email to the city clerk so that their email and their comments can be part of the public record. And then again, please do invite them to come and be part of that public hearing. The problem with engaging in any conversations is it has the potential for disqualifying a council member from hearing the application. And so, you would not be able to sit as part of that decision board unless we go through a process to sort of, to cure those ex parte communications. And I can walk counsel through that the night of the hearing, should anyone have been approached by someone and been unable to prevent them from talking to you before you had a chance to remind them that they need to come to the meeting and not talk to you about the application. Any questions, counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, we'll move on. Looks like Laura is all ready to go. Public hearings, and considering Ordinance 1323. Laura, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. My name is Laura Pellegrino. I'm the city planner. We are here tonight to have the second reading and public hearing on Ordinance Number 1323, Series 2018. It is an ordinance that is very brief, and it deals with the council review of temporary use permits. Today is May 17, 2018, and this ordinance has gone through a few steps. The first step was on April 12 of 2018, we had a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. The minutes of that Planning Commission meeting are included in your packets, and the bottom line is that the Planning Commission did go with staff's recommendation to amend this, to present this ordinance as staff presented it, and to amend the municipal code to allow for this change. On May 3, council had first reading, and today was the date we scheduled the second reading and public hearing. So, in brief, the proposed code amendment is to remove the council review of temporary uses that are unchanged from prior years and have operated without complaint or concern. Since 2008, since the original temporary use permit regulations were put in place, the city has received a total of 261 applications for temporary use permits, and they have been successfully regulated. Forty of those were TUPs for vendors, outdoor vendors, like food trucks. And since 2008, 221 of those were special event permits, like farmers' markets, or VNO and notes, and other special events that I'm sure many of you are familiar with. So, municipal code section 1862, again, is the section that was adopted in 2008. It deals with temporary use permits. It has 10 sections that deal with everything from the purpose of this regulation to the permits that are required for a special event, the types of TUPs, for instance, special events and vendors, the application process for this type of a permit, the review process, the standards that are applied, the appeal process for a temporary use permit, the expiration, the permit renewal, the revocation of a permit, and the non-assignability of a permit. Those are the regulations that are currently in place. Today, we are here to look at amending these regulations to add one sentence. And that sentence is what is shown and read on this slide, and is before you in the print version. And it is the sentence, the sentence we're looking to add is, "If city council has issued a temporary use permit in the past, then subsequent permit renewals may be administratively approved. If all temporary use characteristics are substantially unchanged from the original application, and no complaints or issues have ever been received by the city." So, there are two instances where the regulation as written mandates council review of temporary use permits. And that is where a temporary use occurs between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, any kind of temporary use, whether it's a vendor or a special event, and if this temporary use will occur for longer than six months. So, what we've been, since 2008, since this regulation was implemented, we've received approximately 24 applications that have conflicted with the time, only the time. We've never had a conflict with the six-month regulation. So, we've had applicants that have to come in because they're operating beyond 9:00 PM, but nothing has changed from their special event, from previous years or any other years, and we've never received complaints. And yet, they have to come before council every time for approval because of this code restriction. So, generally, the proposed change does reduce regulation and processing time for temporary use permits. It streamlines the temporary use permit process. Staff believes it removes unnecessary barriers to business and economic development, and ensures understandable, fair, and enforceable regulations, while still allowing for a fair and viable impact assessment for the special event. Staff believes the benefits of adding this one sentence are to reduce redundancy, freeze council agendas and times, it simplifies and clarifies the existing regulations in place, it's an easier process for staff and event coordinators to implement, and it provides greater flexibility for event coordinators and for staff. If we had had this type of flexibility in the original regulation as written, there would have been nine less public hearings in front of this city council. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor, are there any questions of me?
I just have one. You see any downside in this?
I do not.
It saves us time. I know council likes that.
Streamlines regulation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laura, Sally, the sentence right about is long, there's a typo there, longer type of thing. Can you pick that up when you do this change, if the council passes that?
Sure, we can make housekeeping changes to the code.
Anything else, counsel? If not, I just need a motion to approve Ordinance 1323. I'm sorry. Public hearing, I'm sorry. Please, Mr. Good, if you'd like to come forward.
Jerry Good, in this case, 120 East Midland. I've got my business cap on tonight. I, last thing I want to do is get up and talk in front of you guys, because that's not what I do very well. But I want to point out that, from a business perspective, that the word vendor can carry a lot of weight, a lot of competition, unfair competition on a lot of businesses. If you were to take and put a hamburger stand out next to a restaurant that is selling hamburgers, and they take five meals away from that restaurant, they injure that restaurant enough so that they aren't able to stay open. That's not good support. I would very much think that we need to have a discussion about this, a public, heart-to-heart discussion about how we approach vendors in this town. Manitou, Old Colorado City, I was in Estes Park, Breckenridge, many small towns do not allow this to happen. And I do not like the idea of putting it in the planning department's hands where there's no recourse. If it's you're deciding it, then we get to have a discussion and all. But if it's in planning department's hands, I don't like it. That's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, it's the case. We will move on for a motion to consider Ordinance 1323.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sally?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I would ask staff that if we have vendors requesting temporary use permits, that would be in direct competition with the businesses that we have in town. What would staff's process be in considering that? Do we take that, just in response to Mr. Good's concerns, which I'm sure is not, he's not the only one?
No, he's not, but it's not relevant to this. It's not relevant to this issue right now.
Why would it not be relevant?
Well, these are existing, existing TUPs that we have had no issues with and have been approved, and we're just going to allow them, without council, having to review that. Now, for new TUPs, that would be something different. Go ahead, Carol.
Oh, I started saying, new TUP would come back to council, or would come to council.
These are ones that already have been approved.
Okay. Do we have existing TUPs that have no problems, that are in direct competition with businesses we have in town?
We do. We have a obligation to approve a vendor's permit. We cannot be protectionist.
Okay.
It would be discriminatory to business.
Okay.
And so, your question really applies to the merits of the overall temporary use ordinance, and as the mayor said, that's not what tonight's topic is.
Thank you very much. That helps me. And just, and just so you know, I'm asking that question for my own education and information. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question also.
Please.
If they have a problem with anything that's going on with not being allowed to do this, and they return to council?
Absolutely. They will come back to council if staff is uncomfortable with the way they handled things the previous year.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay, I think we have a motion in a second.
We do. We do. I have a motion by Councilman Sanyer to approve Ordinance 1323, and a second by Ms. Harvey.
Thank you.
Sanyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
And Levy?
Thank you, yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we have no new business tonight. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Only have one signed up. If there's anyone else, they can raise their hand, but we'll start with Deb Miller.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Deb Miller, 210 East Midland Avenue. In front of you this evening, you found a signature event poster and our signature event rack cards. These are now being distributed out, not only here in Teller County, but we'll be getting those out in Park and El Paso County. On the rack cards, there, one side has On the rack cards, there, one side has certain information, the other side. And Carol, you have more because you'll be taking them down to Peterson for us and getting those out. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that we have finished our lodging binders. Two hundred lodging binders are completed and will be going out in Teller County in our lodging facilities to help promote our region for the tourist season that's coming up.
Will you want to pick those up, or are you delivering them? How is that?
I can deliver those.
You don't have to. What are your, what are your expectations?
We have some picking up and we have some delivering. So we'll be, we're getting that out to everyone. So thank you very much.
Great. Thanks. I know we're all excited for summer, and this is, just gives us a little glimpse of all the things we have coming up. So thanks very much, Deb. Anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to say something now? Okay, if not, I'm sorry. Didn't see you. I'm sorry, sir. No, it's okay. Come on up, just give us your name and address before you start.
Colter Montgomery, 1260 Sundance Street. I wasn't planning on doing this when I walked in the building, but I definitely wanted to, as a citizen, thank Mr. Donaldson for what he said. In this setting, it would be appropriate for me to say who, but I do work for a company that's in the industry, and he certainly doesn't need any help because that was very impactful, but I would encourage everyone to take heed on what he said. And I want to thank Councilwoman Harvey for helping conduct that. It's very important that we educate ourselves on these contracts that protect our homes. So if you're talking to an insurance company, the one you're currently with or one that you're exploring, ask them to sell you on the contract like he, like he said. They'll sell the price to you all day long. When it comes down to it, it's the contract. That's important. So yeah, I just wanted to, as a citizen of the city, echo what he said, and thank you. Appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, before I move on, and I'm looking closely now, nobody else? Okay, we'll move on to reports, the mayor's reports. I've got a couple of events tonight, and then we'll move on Saturday, June 2nd, two weeks, seven to two, citywide garage sale in Woodland Park High School parking lot. That's always a huge event. And then Thursday, June 7th, from 11:30 to 1:00, Chamber Lunch and Learn, concurring QuickBooks at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And I believe that's all I have. Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful has just made a decision. There's supposed to be rain, heavy rain on Friday and Saturday, rain, thunderstorms, and cold temperatures. So they've decided to move their spring cleanup to Saturday, June 9th, which will be performed in, or executed in the same fashion as currently. So if you're there with your cleanup gear, make sure you're there on June 9th, not on the original date. Thank you.
Could you make sure that this gets emailed to everybody, or the people on the list, whoever that is?
Main Street's put it out.
Good.
I'm not sure if the Chamber already has also. Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
Nothing. Thank you, sir.
That's it, Kelly.
Yes, on the same note, I just thought I would piggyback on that, the focus on the forest, had a cleanup going on at the same time in our forests. They've also rescheduled to June 9th at the same time, same Batman channel. So be sure, and if you had plans on volunteering for either of them, to reach, to change your schedule and reflect that for June 9th.
Thanks, Kelly. Carol?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Laura?
I think Sally has the flower baskets.
Yeah, we're going to go there next.
Yep, so I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, thank you. I attended a Main Street meeting. They're very busy at Main Street, doing a lot of things. And I was pleasantly surprised and shocked at how many volunteers we actually have. I deeply appreciate them, and I look forward in the future to giving a better report as to what Main Street is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to city attorney report?
Nothing.
Nothing. City manager's report, I guess we'll go with Mike Farina to start, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, I put the two quarterly financial reports. One is the first quarter for 2018, but I also thought it would be good to also provide you the unaudited results for the end of 2017 as well. So they're, although they look alike, they're different. One is first quarter 2018, the other one is the year-end financial report. So the financial reports consist of a comparison of year-to-date actuals to the annual budget, and then also prior year-to-date amounts. Tonight, I'll highlight the general fund and also the new cultural and recreation fund, but the report itself contains all city funds. I'll start with the year-end financial report. Again, it's unaudited. The audit is, the audit has taken place, took place beginning of April. I'm still waiting on the draft financials from the auditors, and I'm looking to have that presented to city council in June, the audit and the comprehensive annual financial report. So with these reports, I'm pleased to report that all funds ended with positive fund balances that finished greater than the amount that was budgeted, and finished greater than the amount that was budgeted for the fund balances. Revenues within each fund met or exceeded expectations, budget expectations or projections, and expenditures were within budget. So with the general fund for year-end, I'm starting off. Ninety-nine percent of the budget was expended with nearly $200,000 of the $18,688 budget unspent. 2017 was a year of budget reductions. You may remember when we prepared the 2017 budget, we reduced expenditures over 2016's budget, and the year-end results show that with a reduction of $1 million in expenditures from the prior year. In 2017, we spent $7,120,000 compared to $8,152,000 in 2016. So it's quite a reduction from 2016 actuals. The aquatic center construction was completed in 2017, and total expenditures of $8,713,120 came in just under the 2017 budgeted amount of $8,731,000. Remember, this was a multi-year project, so in 2017, we had the 8.7 million budgeted. We came in just under that. Actual revenues exceeded the amount forecasted in the budget by 51,000, and that's despite not receiving the $170,000 from the E911 board that was budgeted to partially pay for the dispatchers. So we, even though we didn't receive that $170,000, the general fund revenues still exceeded the budget by 51,000. Sales taxes increased 4% or $136,000 over the prior year. Fund balances ended at slightly over $2 million or $250,000 higher than the budget projection. $572,000 of the $2 million fund balance is unrestricted, unassigned, and that nearly doubles the budgeted amount. It's also 6% of the total operating expenditures. We had budgeted, in the 2017 budget, 3.2% or $254,000, and that's why I'm saying it was nearly double what we had projected in the budget for unrestricted on the side. Just remember, the policy amount is 10%. Any questions on the general fund? Okay?
Before capital, by one, a million bucks?
Where?
Am I seeing that correct? Twelve...
Before, no, before capital, the budget was seven...
Never mind, never mind. Never mind. I'm following you.
I was saying it was a million dollar...
I figured it out all by myself.
Less than the prior year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then the other fund I wanted to present, just because it's a new fund and also it has the Woodland Aquatic Center in it, a new operation, I wanted to highlight the Culture and Recreation Fund. It's a new fund that was created in 2017 to account for culture, parks, and recreation activities, including the Woodland Aquatic Center. And I'll highlight each component of that because we moved in two components that were previously in the general fund, the Parks and Rec Cost Center, as well as the Cultural Arts Center that were in the general fund. They are now part of this new fund. Parks and Recreation budget was 98% expended. Ninety-nine percent of the expected revenue was received, and it covered 33% of the expenditures. So there's 33% coverage from the revenue to cover the expenditures. So that resulted in $195,000 being transferred in from the general fund. Before, you wouldn't see that transfer because those expenditures were in the general fund, but it, the general fund was still paying for it. Now you just see it as a transfer. And we did that, that's why we created this fund, was to create that transparency and more accountability for those expenditures. The cultural center budget was 92% expended. 118% of the expected revenue was received, which covered 27% of the expenditures. Therefore, $79,500 was transferred from the general fund to cover that difference. In the Woodland Aquatic Center budget, it was 82% expended. 71% of expected revenue was received, and it covered, but it covered 83% of expenditures. Therefore, $29,400 was transferred from the general fund to cover the difference. And remember, that was a partial year because the Woodland Aquatic Center operations did not start until October, so that was basically three months worth of operations. Any questions on the Culture and Recreation Fund? Cindy's not here, so I'll do my best to answer any questions. Cindy is more aware of the revenues in detail, and I just got the numbers, but, you know, discussion on, questions may have to go back to her, but I'll go ahead and give you a shot if there are any questions.
I got one on, on the aquatic center for 2018. You probably don't have this number, but can you give us a sense of how we're doing revenue-wise versus...
That's coming up in my next report. Anybody else? So as I said, all of the other funds, which I won't go into, they're all in the report. They ended with positive fund balances and, and also positive budget-to-actual variances.
Hold on one second, Mike. Go ahead, Deb.
I'm hoping the auditors will have it ready and for us to have it presented to you, but in June. I was planning June 7th. Now I'm not sure.
The charter requires an April 30th delivery to the council?
I think it requires an audit to be completed, and the audit fieldwork has been completed. That's, well, does that answer your question? That's how it's, ever since Gatsby '34, at least in Parker, it's very hard to get the financial statements, especially when the meetings were the first and the 15th of April. But then way back when, we decided, okay, fieldwork complete, however, preparation and presentation of CAFER took place afterwards.
Any other questions?
So the audit was complete in the middle of April.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions on the year-end report before I move on to the first quarter 2018?
The only question I had, Mike, was the 4% increase in sales tax revenue did not include the 1% that goes to the school district.
That's correct. I let, I mean, it would skew the numbers, so I was strictly talking about the 2%, the 1% for the 410. So on to the first quarter finance report. Again, I'll just highlight the general fund and the cultural and recreation fund. In the general fund, overall, 21% of the budget is expended, noting that we're 25% of the way through the year. Revenue is at 25% received. Sales tax revenue so far through the first three months is 9% over 2017. The sales tax reports that Mr. Butteries sent out, that will also be coming out, that will reflect that as well. In the cultural and recreation fund, as I said earlier, this is a new fund that was created in 2017, and I'll highlight again each component of that fund. The Parks and Recreation budget is 20% expended with 19% of the expected revenue being received, and that covers 31% of expenditures. Therefore, $43,200 was transferred from the general fund to cover the difference. Cultural Center budget is 18% expended, 21% of expected revenue is received, and it covers 29% of the expenditures. So you can see that's pretty similar to how it ended up in 2017, so it's pretty consistent with revenue coverage. $15,700 was transferred from the general fund to cover the difference. The Woodland Aquatic Center budget is 21% expended, again, 25% of the way through the year, 18% of expected revenue is received, and covers 67% of expenditures. So with that, to your question, Mayor, 18% of the revenue is received. Again, this was our first year with the budget, and we said, you know, we're, these were our estimates, and it'll take a year, maybe two years, to be able to zero in on what our actual projected revenue is going to be. So, and also, it's the beginning of the year, January, February, March, revenues may pick up in the summer.
That said, if we get $100,000 in the first quarter, we come up with $400,000, just round numbers, with a 538 projection. We anticipated a, I think, in the, in the red, about 100 and, did we say 150, 130? Do you remember what that number was?
For coverage from the general, what the general fund would need to pick up?
Yes.
For the Woodland Aquatic Center, right, we budgeted $538,000 in revenue, $677,000, so that's about $150,000, $140,000.
So based on first quarter, we're, we're close?
Based on first quarter, we're close.
And what you're saying is that...
The transfer in from the general fund, which I hadn't said yet, $47,200 was transferred from the general fund to cover that difference. That's about 22% of the budgeted amount. So it's, it's pretty close. Expenditures, revenue was less, but so were expenditures. One thing we do know in the Woodland Aquatic Center that we were off quite a bit on the projected amount was the, the budget and projections for utilities. Just, we budgeted $55,000, $27,500 for each gas and electric. And right now, as of March 31st, $25,700 in utilities is the cost, which is nearly half of what we budgeted. So we've taken a close look at that, also during the construction phase, when it was open and seeing these huge utility bills, a lot higher than what we expected. There was some work done with the HVAC to try to get those costs down, and they've come down compared to the first few months, however, it's still high. So that's definitely something that Cindy's well aware of, and we're looking at, and there may be some more discussion regarding the utilities and the overall effect on the budget in the coming months. Again, it's still early, and, but we are definitely keeping an eye on that.
Council, any questions? Kelly, come on, you gotta have something.
I do.
Good.
I'm going to talk to the finance director about it first.
Okay.
I'll bring it to the council next meeting.
Thank you.
Just another thing in the, in the report is in the wastewater, wastewater utility fund. Right now, as you know, we're still constructing the improvements or the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. The budget is $15,000 in 2018. That's because we budgeted all of the, all of the expenditure in 2017. So you'll be seeing a carryover of the unspent funds in 2017, carryover by supplemental appropriation into the 2018 budget to still continue and finish that project in 2018. So it might look weird. You may see that it looks like we're way over budget in the, in this report, but that's because that supplemental appropriation has not taken place yet. That and several other items will be part of the supplemental appropriation request.
That provokes a question. When you bring that supplemental appropriation request to us, you will cite the revenue that will support that, correct?
Yes.
And it won't be revenue that we've already spent or budgeted for, correct?
Correct. Or it will be council's decision, for example, the recruitment of the next city manager. There is no revenue that was generated to cover that, but obviously, that cost is going to be there.
We'll just have to find savings somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
We will. Thank you.
Council, any other questions for Mike? Appreciate it, Mike. Great work, as always.
And these, these reports will go up, be posted on the city's website.
Great. Okay, Sally, we'll move on to you.
Thank you. Let's talk about flower baskets. Just a little bit of background before the staff's recommendation here. In the 2017 budget, the Public Works Department does have funding for flowers in our downtown, but it is all the ground-level flower beds. And there are approximately 42 of those flower beds that will be planted during the second week of June. So that portion is budgeted. What was cut out of the budget were the flower baskets, and there are 18 of those. And typically, the parks, buildings, and grounds would order those flower baskets early in the year from a greenhouse, and they would begin growing... early in the year from a greenhouse, and they would begin growing them, and they're basically about a hundred dollars each. So about two thousand dollars is needed for the materials to fill eighteen basket locations. And then also, what was cut from the budget was a seasonal worker to the tune of three thousand dollars. So in order to reinstate baskets, flower baskets in the downtown area for these eighteen locations, it will be approximately five thousand dollar expenditure. Staff believes that we can either cover that with savings, or we can do a supplemental appropriation if we don't have the savings that can cover it. So we would like to get your direction as to whether to move forward with this five thousand dollar added expense.
Sally, tell us where that savings is gonna come from.
Mike?
I'm gonna have to do a thorough analysis, not just the fine savings for the five thousand, but, but for other, for example, the city manager's search. So it'll, it, I mean, right now, you can think of the vacancy savings that we have for the special projects or the coordinator position, and also the city manager. That's all gonna be analyzed, along with other vacancy savings that we will see.
Go ahead, Val. Mr. Mayor, thank you. So Main Street and the Trudy Layton, her organization, I can't remember what it is, have stepped up to talk about supporting all that effort, minus baskets and things like that. I don't have exact stuff in front of me because I didn't have it on the agenda, but...
Talking about maintenance?
Maintenance, yeah. So there's, there's volunteer effort available without the city. Obviously, the supervision is, is the key there, but there are volunteer organizations, so I don't know who would look into that, but I know Main Street's been looking at that, and maybe they, maybe we can approach Main Street and see if they know what I'm talking about, or they just say it's a crazy council and I'm not gonna talk about this. But I'm pretty sure there's some things available to us, not totally budget-wise. So if we had some volunteers, I guess is what Val's asking, how much could we possibly save on that three thousand dollars? Or do we still have to hire, gotta hire somebody for the summer, you can't give him or her a job for fifteen hundred bucks?
These baskets do require daily watering, so it requires a staff that is dedicated to this as well. They operate the equipment, city equipment, to do the watering, but we certainly will look into, and I've got Trudy's name written down here, so we will, we will seek whatever help we can get.
Go ahead, Hillary.
It's my understanding from the first, you've been working with a set of volunteers, plus a lot of the purchasing, I think, so, and the university, what's left on it?
Talking Bruce Mettepo?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Also, maybe it's an opportunity for the city to maybe partner with some of the businesses on Main Street that have the baskets in front of their stores. Maybe they would be up or willing to help keep the water in the baskets, so maybe...
Great idea.
I could champion that by maybe visiting with some of them. Then the other thing I would like to say is that, I've forgotten what the other thing is that I had to say. So if it comes back, I'll raise my hand. Thank you.
Well, you made me think of something, though, to ask. And Mike, if you're going to look at any supplemental, could we see that by the next meeting? My concern is with the flower baskets, is that sooner is better than later, because the season, the season up here isn't very long, anyway. But if we could see that, plus the other supplemental requests, if they're going to be supplemental, are brought to us and broken down, specifically the costs incurred with the city manager's...
Yes.
Well, the other part of that is, how long do we wait to order flowers if we don't make a decision today?
Yeah. And we need your guidance tonight on the flowers alone.
I think everybody will agree, and Michael will back us up on this, we're gonna save some money, that obviously because the city manager's not here, we're gonna lose a public works guy, and there's been other vacancies that have been created the last few weeks as a result of some that have resigned, so if you, I don't know how to characterize it, we will have some money that won't be spent. What's council's feeling on spending two, three, four thousand dollars on flowers for downtown? Jan, if you have something, go ahead and come on up, and you cannot tell us from there.
Mayor and Council, for the flower baskets, five thousand dollars. I, I don't see bringing in a supplemental appropriation for five thousand dollars, so it's more the bigger items and the carry-forward items that are going to be part of the supplemental.
And having a seasonal employee that's covered by the city's insurance, et cetera, is preferable, I would think, to, depending on a volunteer. We'd be liable for slipping on the water that he poured on the flowers or whatever.
It's the operation.
I think it'd be just fine. People all, down in Colorado Springs have a volunteer program, they take care of beds. They take care of flowers all the time. I think it would be a great morale-building and collaboration effort for the businesses and cities to come together like that.
Would you recommend then not hiring a seasonal employee?
Yeah. Jeff?
Jan Wilson, 2320 Rampart Range Road. I'm also on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and I do the adopt-a-garden. So I have lots of city gardens that are adopted by individuals or businesses. I take care of the gardens around Curves and the basket, the flower basket, and I'm more than willing to try to get with the businesses that have baskets around them and ask them to help out with doing that. And there's no reason to pay somebody to do that.
So we get a commitment from Main Street and from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, then we need maybe a couple thousand dollars to buy the flowers?
I say buy the flowers.
Everybody agree with that? Whatever, well, she said eighteen hundred plus, so maybe two thousand? Think two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars is a good number? We don't have to spend it all.
I would say that as long as it's covered without supplemental.
Then we're good.
And the staff has that discretion.
Yeah.
Just need, go ahead.
I'll let you know who the businesses are, that I'll go and let you know if they agree to, to do that. If they don't, I have no problem doing that myself. I'm gonna take on the, the situation behind the cowhand.
I've got three or four girls at the Swiss, too, that would love to be part of that, so reach out to me if you need some help.
And I'm happy to help you with that.
I told you that, you know, that witnesses here that heard you say that.
No. If I say it, I mean it. Tanner, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, everybody. Tanner Coy, 240 East US Highway 24. I really appreciate this discussion. Flowers are valuable to our downtown this season. The beauty of this environment is what draws people up here, and the more we can reflect that in the downtown, the better off we are as a community. The level of beautification in downtown has been declining somewhat in recent years, and the reasons are evident. And the challenge that we have in, in restoring an appropriate level of beautification is one I don't think we'll be able to meet this year without the support of the city. And seeing that support from you all here tonight is, it means a lot, so I'm grateful for that. I want to tell you, I've been a part of the beautification efforts in Woodland Park for years, and maintenance is one of our biggest challenges. There are many volunteers here, and they're great people. And with the right leadership and organization, we will be able to utilize them to accomplish more than ever before. That said, the reality, in my opinion, is that asking this year to organize those volunteers in a manner that will successfully maintain the, the flower baskets that we're talking about is, is not likely. And we, we won't realize, we won't maximize our return on investment in those flowers. And the city, with the equipment the city has and the ability to manage the, the grounds crew as they've traditionally done, is really the most efficient, best way to make sure that we don't drop the ball this year. I would suggest and ask that you please approve the money that you've been asked for, for the maintenance side of the flowers, those baskets, so that we can work to develop the volunteer teams this year, see how much progress we can make there, and perhaps reduce city support in the future, but not this year.
I'd like to take a different approach. I think between you and Darlene and Jan and Val and Paul, we can provide the leadership to get it done. Let's see if we can do that. And we'll get help from the city. If they need some, you know, we don't have to hire somebody to provide some help and some direction on how we do these things, but we have tons of volunteers, let's use them, let's give it a shot.
I'm all for it. I'm just telling you, the reality, after years of experience, is that the amount of maintenance needed for those baskets downtown is not something you're going to meet with, with volunteers. It's too much water on too regular basis across too much territory. The logistics don't make sense. The city has the equipment, and one part-time person takes care of that. So we can fund the flowers. I'd rather give the two thousand dollars for the flowers and let you save that money and have you put the resources into the maintenance than you buy flowers and save money on maintenance.
I don't think this council cares how we do it. We'll spend twenty-five hundred. Do you want to, you want to buy the flowers and we'll provide the maintenance?
Flowers are bought. That money's already been pledged from the private sector, and you don't have to worry about it. Three thousand dollars was the amount for the maintenance, and if you guys can do that, we're there.
There's our answer.
Mr. Mayor, can Bruce, the one that made the three thousand dollars, will cover everything on his schedule?
Counsel, what do you think? So who's buying the flowers? Is that Main Street? Is that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful?
Trudy Layton and her team have been beating the street, raising funds, and we have the money for flowers.
Good.
I, I agree with Tanner, but it takes constant care. I know that, like, out, it just takes lots of training.
No, I know it takes constant care. I think we have the numbers. I didn't realize that someone was gonna buy the flowers for us, so that opens up the money for us. So Counsel, is that four thousand dollar number for maintenance, is that agreeable? No, that's just, she said maintenance. Is that maintenance, Hillary, or is that maintenance and buying the flowers?
I think that was maintenance and...
Oh, good.
But, but I'm not sure. But we know that the part-time seasonal employees...
Three thousand.
And that's what Tanner's recommending.
Counsel, you agree? Can we, can we give three thousand bucks?
I agree if they will deadhead the baskets so they don't get stringy. That's what I remember. You gotta deadhead them while you water.
There you go.
And building on this plan, I'd like to suggest that doing this allows us to provide the leadership for those business and property owners to work on their own properties, which, some of which are in desperate need of some maintenance and upkeep, and we need to start with that, where they're concerned, and not ask them to go take care of the city planters instead.
That's great. Thanks, Tanner.
Thank you.
Good information. So Counsel, we have consensus on three thousand dollars to provide maintenance for the flowers, which they are going to provide. We're good with that?
Yep.
Great. Sally, thank you. What else?
Perfect, thank you. I have one more item that I wanted to share with you. The city wants to send our condolences to Carol Kenny's family. He recently passed away at an age of ninety-one. Carol Kenny served as mayor from 1968 to 1976. This was an important time in Woodland Park's history, when our population grew from six hundred and sixty-six people in 1960 to well over two thousand people by the time Mayor Kenny was out of office. So he was very instrumental in negotiating water deals with the city of Colorado Springs. He instituted the subdivision and zoning regulations in 1969. He held special election in 1975 to approve and adopt the city's charter as a home rule charter. He also, Carol, you'll be interested, did the first comprehensive plan for Woodland Park in 1974. Just an amazing person. I will really miss saying hello to Carol at the post office. He would check his mail every day at noon, like clockwork, and it was always a great time to be able to chat with Carol about Woodland Park. He was a humble and gracious man who provided excellent leadership during a time of great change in Woodland Park and paved the way for a positive future. Rest in peace, Carol.
Yeah, thanks, Sally. Can you give us more information on the funeral? I believe it's Saturday.
It is Saturday, and unfortunately, it's down in the Springs, I believe, but he will have a burial here at the cemetery. Kristy, what time, Kristy?
If you could email Counsel that information, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
That's all that we have.
Okay, Kip, you have anything today?
What?
Anything you want. Are we done at the wastewater treatment?
Not quite. Close, close. The last apparatus went into place on Tuesday, so the tertiary filter was dropped into place. Very creative is the contractor to get that into place. It's a very large piece of equipment that had moved through the UV area and the old chlorine contact area, and then dropped about six feet down into a hole with no equipment. So they were very creative in how they did that, and it went well. The third clarifier was also put online this week. That went well. So it's nice to have three clarifiers for our staff instead of just the two that were overloaded. So punch list items are going on as we speak, and they've also chipped in, and they're doing a little bit of bonus work for us, if you will, on things that we see that need to be done while they're there.
And on time and under budget, is that correct?
I'll say on time, and I don't want to jinx anything at this point.
We're, we're close. Great, thanks very much. Thanks very much. One last thing, Counsel, before I forget. We have a council meeting on June 7th. June 21st is our next scheduled meeting, but there'll be a number of us that'll be at CML. July 5th, we don't have a meeting normally because of that July 4th kind of weekend. So my question is this, I don't think we should go six weeks without a meeting. Would June 28th work for everybody to have a council meeting, for our second council meeting in June, seeing as though we'll miss the 21st and we'll miss the 5th? Can we schedule the 7th and the 28th? Does that make sense for everybody? Okay, make note of that, Sally. What do we need, what do we need for that?
Let's just make sure that we're on board.
For the 7th? Okay. Okay. Great.
Everyone will plan on it, so...
Comments on written correspondence? The only thing I have I didn't mention, got a notice from Andrew Womack and, and Caris Bible College. The grand opening ceremony of the auditorium, which is a great event facility that I know this whole community will use, including graduations from the high school and the future, seating for thirty-two hundred guests, will be, the grand opening will be on November 5th at 5:30. And so we'll have more announcements relative to that, but that's a, that's a big event for our community, and I happened to be out there this week, and the building is just phenomenal, and so I needed to mention that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Counsel, anything else? Thanks, everybody. This meeting's adjourned.